Welcome to our meeting. Director Leone, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? So first of all, we just, the board wants to thank the Roseburg High School leadership team for these beautiful gifts and cards that they have given to us as part of School Board Appreciation Month. And we love our kids and they're amazing. And I don't know if you can see it, but the way they've even addressed the cards are so amazingly artistic. So pretty, pretty cool. Yes, they are loving us back. First of all, I just want to ask if there's any media present, if they would like to introduce themselves, please. Okay, anybody online? Okay, thank you. Just a reminder to mute your cell phones and also anybody that speaks, turn the mic on when, and when you're finished, turn the mic off. That's a reminder to myself. And also, yeah, okay, don't need to say that. Director Hammerson has a family commitment this evening, so he is not here. So we will get started with just the formal board portion first. Item number one, the walk-in freezer bid award. And Cheryl, do you want to? All right, perfect. Great, thank you. You did receive information on Friday about this, so hopefully, you know, if you have any questions, you can, can ask Denny. But take it away, Denny, don't forget to turn on your mic.
Do that when I stepped up this direction. So you do have the memo that I prepared as a result of the request for proposals. And the recommendation based on the apparent low bid is that the board select S and B James Construction to complete the project. There were two vendors that provided a lower bid price, but that price was for the equipment and the installation of the refrigerator freezers, but didn't take into account all of the demolition, construction and civil, civil work that was required for both, both locations. So I'm available for questions about our process.
Actually, you answered something we were kind of questioning just in your opening statement.
Excellent.
Is it two refrigerators?
It is.
Or two freezer and refrigerator? What, explain what, what are we buying?
They're, they're walk-in units.
Right.
They have a cooler front entrance and a freezer back compartment. So the schools presently, for example, Hughcrest has only a three-door reach-in freezer. So they are able to store on-site about three or four days' worth of, of food. In the best of circumstances, usually it's one or two days' bric-a-bri. So it's important that they have more storage space. More storage space will permit them to have more product available.
Okay, great.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the request to award the Hughcrest and Melrose Elementary Schools Walk-In Freezer Project to S and B James Construction of Medford, Oregon. Do I have a motion?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? I will say that S and B James has given us superior service. They've been easy to work with. Great company, so I am pleased that that is your recommendation. Do we have any other comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Hi? Okay, it's unanimous, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denny. That is the regular part of the board meeting. We're going to move on now to our board work session. And we have item number one on that, I'm called Community College Medical Pathways Partnership, the capital project. And tonight we have UCC President, President Rachel Ho-Grant. And Jared will be sharing information specific to a UCC capital project that UCC has been working on that could be of mutual benefit to students served by Roseburg Public Schools. And Jared, would you?
I would be, it'd be great to do that. Welcome, Rachel, great to see you here. For those of you who haven't had the privilege of really getting to know Rachel, just a couple of quick things about Rachel. She is a massive community asset and a fantastic hire for us. We are working closely together on integration. I think we're, we're clearly part of the reason why we are trending in terms of design and outcomes for kids in this community. And this, in this acceleration of improvement is really in large part due to Rachel, her willingness to partner with us. We do view our organizations as one organization. That if you don't know, we've got her staff on our campuses, our, our staff on her campus. We do share in some co-funded positions like Brett Steininger back there. So she's been a fantastic partner and I would just say that she's been a catalyst for community transformation. And I think part of what you're here tonight is really a community transformation project. And so thank you for everything you're doing in our community, Rachel, great to see you and take it away.
Thank you, friend, thank you, board members. It is Board Appreciation Month, so thank you for your service. This is a, a big task in helping guide our amazing school districts. I thank you for everything that you do. I have to brag about your superintendent back to him just for a hot second. The great thing about Jared is that he approaches his job in, from the lens of what opportunities can we create for our community and for our students? It is very easy for a superintendent to just come in and manage. It's a whole different thing to have a vision and lead us into the future. And so I just want to thank him for being that person. And thank you for keeping him in this job so that we can create amazing opportunities for your kids together. I'm going to give you a little bit of a frame about what we're bringing to you tonight first. In 2023, UCC launched a new strategic doing plan. And really braided throughout that plan was this idea of strengthening our medical community here in Roseburg and throughout the county. We've all tried to get a radiology appointment or a doctor's appointment or get our blood drawn. And we all know how difficult that is. And our medical providers are struggling every single day for staffing. So we embedded that in our strategic plan that goes really through the end of this decade to make a significant impact in that workforce pipeline. That talent, as Jared would say, is sitting in your schools right now. So us doing it alone makes absolutely no sense, right? And again, we're so lucky to have a partner that says, yes, let's create those opportunities. So serving that workforce pipeline and also serving our students who are looking for high-skill, high-wage jobs right here in the community so that we can continue to grow, be economically viable and a great place to live. We've made enormous strides. We've started six programs in the last two years. If any of my staff are out there listening, they're all a little bit exhausted. But we're seeing that great impact. We've had enormous enrollment growth at the college, around 25% for our fall term last year. And we're about 30% for our winter term. And some of that is these new programs that we've created and making sure that the community knows the opportunities that are here. Throughout that entire process, we have designed those programs so that they can start in your schools. All the way down into middle school where students can look at the pathway that's available to them. And then in the high school, your students are on our campus every day. Our faculty are on your campus teaching those programs. And we've been able to start many of those programs in your high school with Dave's help, who's amazing also. That is the vision that you have created for your students, right? Is that we figure out what opportunities we can create, especially right here in the community. We don't want to export our talent. We want our talent to be right here to take care of all of us when we're old. So we are now to the point where we are busting out of our space, our high-tech clinical space to offer our programs in. So our board has committed to a new building on our campus. We've been sort of quietly fundraising in the background and have been very successful because our medical partners are all in on this project, all in on our partnership with you. So we are sitting at about $16.5 million to build a $19 million project right now. So we're very close to our goal and we have no reason to believe we won't make that. Our design is almost complete. The plan is, a few of you are out at our campus for a tour. If we met you outside the administration building where the flagpoles are. That building was the first building built on the UCC campus. We will be tearing that building down and that's where the new building will be going. So front and center. Part of that building will be for these medical careers and another part of that building will be a welcome center for our college. If you've ever come to our college, sometimes it's a little bit confusing, like where do I start? Where's the front door to this institution? We will have a very clear front door at UCC when this new building is built. So we will knock down the admin building this summer and by October, we will be digging the foundation for our new building. Regardless of, of how we take tonight's conversation and your deliberations, that investment in what's available for your students, our investment's your investment, right? Whatever building we build is a building for all of your kids as well. So I just want to make that really clear. But we are now at the point where we need to nail down our design and make some decisions. And you probably already know that every month Jared and I have breakfast. And wild things come from coffee and hot chocolate mixed together. Great ideas come out of those conversations. And in a conversation about this building, as we are always doing, Jared and I said, what's the opportunity here for our kids? Like, how do we make sure that we're capitalizing on this project so that it's a joint project? Because we think about all of these things as our joint projects. There are some great examples around the country in places like North Carolina and Texas of high school magnet schools on college campuses. They are wildly successful. It is extremely compelling for a junior or senior in a high school to have part of their school week be on a college campus. It makes that pathway we've been talking about crystal clear for a student and a family. And it gives a student in your schools an opportunity to transition into that college life. There are, most of these schools exist in really, really big communities. At places where there's a lot of opportunity for kids. And we think about big cities having all these opportunities for kids, right? Places like Austin, Texas. And what Jared and I talk about a lot is not just trying to match the opportunities that students can get in big cities, but being even better than that. Making it so that you are a privileged kid if you get to go to Roseburg School District. Because look at all these things they have that nobody else has. We would like to push that envelope. And there is an opportunity right now for you to think about being part of our capital project and having some of that space in that building, sort of a a space that comes off one of our major hallways that's specifically for medical programming on our campus for your students. It's sort of a once in a probably 20-year opportunity. And it's a physical space. But it's not about money for a physical space. It's about a vision for a community transformation. It's about showing what we can do in rural communities. We have a special sauce, a secret sauce, right? I talked to my colleagues that are at big community colleges and they often don't know their superintendents or their school district staff because that's just not the world they work in. But when we get to partner like this, we get to create something pretty unique in a rural community that you would never find in one of those big cities where we think all the opportunity lies. We can have an even bigger opportunity here. I'm sure you have a million questions about the building and about the programming and all of those things that I'm happy to answer. And I am certainly not here to sell you anything because it doesn't matter if, if this is the direction you go in or not. That is uniquely your decision. We will continue to work together and create opportunities for your students, whether that happens or not. So I would just open it up for questions and probably Jared maybe has some things you want to add on as well.
Yeah, I'm going to be happy to. I'm, 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 the board has, we've roughly talked about this conceptual idea before. I think maybe you haven't been able to, the board hasn't seen, when we talk about the medical, so let me back up a little bit. When I got to Roseburg, we moved here in 2019, I heard quite a bit about a, a medical college. And I think it's important for the board to realize this is happening. The medical college is happening at UCC. So just to give you an idea, the space upstairs, simulation labs, exam rooms upstairs is a, it's being vetted by some of our medical partners just to make sure it's perfect. But it's, there's some flexible space up there. The opportunity, the board, and I'm hoping we have lots of questions tonight, is really a, a place at that building that is an annex. We talked about $400 a square feet. So to give you an idea, 5,000 square feet, about $2 million investment, 6,000 square feet, about $2.4 million investment. So that's, that's, it's going to be a fantastic space at UCC. And the, the conversation, again, no decision needed tonight, it's just a rumble about this tonight, so.
Them drawings, I mean, what's it? Are there any drawings that we're going to see tonight or just, or?
You are not going to see any drawings tonight. We are not quite ready to show that out, share that out with the world, but I can tell you a little bit about it. So it's going to be a two-story building, about 24,000 square feet. The first floor is a welcome center for the college. So student services, registration, student advising, things like that. And a little bit of sort of general classroom slash meeting space. And then upstairs, there will be two simulation labs. There will be exam rooms for programs like medical, medical assisting or things that are more clinic-based programs. There will be an occupational therapy room, there will be a radiology tech room. Super high-tech building. We've actually, we got a $2.5 million grant from Senator Merkley to pay for all the really high-tech medical equipment that we need in the building. So our students will be learning on the very same equipment they will be working on at Mercy Hospital when they take those great jobs. Does that answer your question?
I'm getting older.
I just want everybody out there.
I get it. So is it going to be 5,000 square feet, a building off to the side tied in? Or is it going to be one floor or will that be two floors too, or?
It'll be one floor, the way, but, but there would be a lot of design work to do if in fact you decide to go down this route. And then we would, you know, the, the plans would all come to you multiple times over. But the idea it's on the ground floor, all on one floor, and it would come off our main hallway so that it's part of everything we're doing. And those students have access to all of the equipment and labs that we have. But there would be some space dedicated for the high school students, for learning space and a little bit for retreating space. So what we learned from looking at some of these other schools around the country is that you have different rules for your students, for safety, for attendance, for things that we don't necessarily deal with. That it really helps if there's a, a dedicated space that's your space that students can enter and exit and retreat to when needed.
I'm on a roll, I'd like to continue. So it's 400 square feet.
4,000 square, four to 5,000 square.
$400, what I meant to say. What would that, what would that cost us if we built something like that? Well, let's say it's the same thing, what would it cost us per square feet, ballpark figure if we built it on our campus? Would it be more than 400?
It would, I'm very confident, like extremely confident to say it'd be significantly more than 400, I thought, yeah.
And would we own that portion or how would that, how's that look?
Yeah, we've talked about, they'll need to be an MOU written. But, but it would be, it would be Roseburg High School space, it would be our district space there. I believe it would be the only high school building on a college campus in the state of Oregon, actually. But it would be, the district would own the, the property there. We'd still need to work on some agreements on exactly how that would work, but it would be a district space for our, our students on, on the UCC campus.
Okay, and then, then I'll, one more thing that'll be done for the night. Maybe, maybe. I've been in favor of this since Dave, when you brought it up. I, I think you've mentioned it's like a once in a lifetime and for, or a once in a 20-year thing and we need more space. And running up another bond doesn't guarantee it's going to pass. But we were told, our, our stakeholders in this community told us, you know, we're not going to support a bond right now, but figure out different avenues. What can you do differently? And this is really one of those different things. And I think we would really be shorting our kids if, we're not making a decision tonight, I get that. But we would really be shorting our kids, future students down the line if we didn't hop on board for this. Want to say one thing and then I'll be done. I had to go, I went downtown today for an appointment. It was so cool. I, I'm parked and I start seeing all these baseball players. Walking, I, I'm assuming to the parking garage down. That, it is so cool to see our college students downtown and living. I mean, it's different. And, and excitement, and I really think that we just keep an open mind, we should really consider this when we vote in a couple of weeks. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of quick questions. Now, would Roseburg High School's name be on their portion of the building?
We would, but we would hope so and love it and make it massive.
Wonderful.
Yeah, because I think, you know, for us, it's, it's, it's an honor to be partnered with all of you and have your name on our campus.
That's great. The other question I have is, in this cost, is that fully come with the desks, everything? And there wouldn't be additional charges for those types of things?
That's a fantastic question. I think we have to work out a lot of those details still. We have not gotten down to that level of design and yeah, we'd have to talk about all those things. But thank you for asking that question because now my wheels are turning. Got to figure that part out.
So is it, is it primarily classroom space, you know, lecture area? Will they have access to the other, the high-tech equipment?
Yes.
So it's kind of a, they come into the, into the, into the building, into the high school portion. And then say they have a lab up in one of the high-tech, so it, it'll be shared?
You've got it exactly right, yeah. The idea with the lab space upstairs is that we don't actually have any classroom space upstairs at all. We have plenty of classroom space on our campus. What we don't have is that high-tech lab space. So that's, that's the only thing we're building on that second floor. So yes, the idea would be that there would be learning space, classroom space, potentially an office or two for your staff, an entryway sort of thing. And then the students will be moving around that building, just like they're college students.
So it's not, so it's not just a nurse, part of the nursing program, that's part of it. So they, so student wants to be a doctor or so this opens up all those doors for them.
Exactly, the idea is they, they pick that pathway and they are coming to our campus for a portion of their high school day to get on that pathway early.
Yeah, so I guess question to, to you would be, so pathways, how are, are we, are we, are going to create new pathways for students to go in that direction and then have access to all of that?
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we're, we're deep, um, in the pathway world right now. We have some strong, strong pathways right now. We've talked about the, you know, the LPN, RN, those are there, but phlebotomy, surge tech, there's, so we, those pathways are there. I'll just add too, you know, as we think about, we've had multiple conversations with our business partners. You know, one of the things also just to think about is, and they'll be reciprocity with the space, I'm hoping, you know, your students are our students and that, I think the space is mutually beneficial in many ways. But I'm just thinking about, you know, as we, as we think about the opportunity of, of a, a student that effectively could potentially have no debt, a job in the community that's high-wage, high-demand, will need, so we, you know, we think about like community engagement. You know, we're working with our middle school families to really understand this incredible opportunity. And like Rachel said, if you're lucky enough to live in Douglas County, the opportunities will astound people. But also I think we need some flexible space because I could see parent meetings with elementary and middle school students that involve hospital providers, the schools to come and see at a young age, to be there at a young age, to hear from the hospital. So I think we want some space that provides an oppo, a venue for thinking differently as a community. So I think it's multi-use space. It's really part of this, you know, people talk about partnership all the time and that's a very ambiguous term. When we talk about partnership, it can mean lots of things. It can mean your logo on our letterhead. But really what we're talking about is an opportunity to things, to be integrated in the way we do things and also to really be involved in a community transformation project. So it really would, every single current and emerging pathway, and again, the pathway development comes by asking people in the industry, what do you need in five, 10 years, right? That's how the pathway starts. But it, it, I, we're going to try to build, I mean, the college done a good job building and designing a flexible space that could be for pathways that don't currently exist. This space could also double as a way to accelerate that.
So we did tour the facility before and we saw the, was it the, the medical bed?
Yeah, simulation labs.
Yes. So my question is, would that be moved into the new facility? Or will the students be going between buildings to get to these things?
That, that's a yes and, you know, we, we want your students to have access to all of our cool stuff, right? But where you toured is our H and S C building. It's the nursing program. There's, we've shoehorned a little bit of CNA and a little phlebotomy in there because we, we're running out of space. But this new building is really going to be for those other programs, radiology technician, surgery technician, medical assisting, occupational and physical therapy. Those are the new things that are great pathways for our entire community that don't exist. So they're all very new for us as well. Prior to that, we really just had a nursing program and a little bit of CNA. So we're, we're growing that medical college vision that has been here for quite some time. So to answer your question, it's a yes and, right? When your students come onto our campus, they're, all of the buildings are for them.
I'm not that familiar with magnet schools. You said like in North Carolina, there's something similar. I would like to definitely get more information on how that actually is working. It, it seems like we, we would, you don't, you don't so much need us, but we kind of need you to, we're partnering, but you don't need us to be a part of your, your building. You're going to build this building.
Yes.
And it's the, the programs are going to be instituted. And those, I'm glad you asked that about the nursing because that's what I was thinking. How is this different than what you already have in your nursing program? But I, I remember I thought I was going to be a nurse. I was not that strong in sciences, but I found one school that taught nursing or chemistry for nurses. And I thought, oh, that's, that's, that's good because I don't want all the other chemistry stuff. I only want what I'll need for nursing. And so I think And so I think, um. There are people that definitely are going into a nursing pathway already and you have that on campus, which is, you know, that's. Great and, and you're, it's being successful now. I know there was a couple of hiccups, but it's going well. But these other areas that we're looking at, I think. Are, are all the supportive services, um, that you don't have to be a star science. Uh, person to get a job in a medical field, you know, with the proper training.
Yeah.
And so I think for our, uh, a lot of our kids, this would be, you know, this is very doable. And so we're excited, you know, about that. Um. The, there again, the annex, trying to picture if, if we're on the side of. Where the main building, are, are we, uh, at a corner of the main two-story building?
Let, let me paint a picture of what we think it might look like. And again, you will be, if you decide to go this route, you will be involved in the whole design process and see that roll out. But, um. If you can imagine driving down College Road right now into the main campus. The current admin building, which is sort of our front door is kind of set back. And it faces the neighborhood. It doesn't really face the road. Our new building will face directly the road, so you will drive down College Road and it will be very clear. It will be a shining beacon. Where you're supposed to come. And the ideas for, for the side of that building to be your space, it would directly face. The road with a giant sign on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we don't want to hide you because we are very proud of that. And, and if I can make a quick comment about what you said, um. We have seventy-two spots for LPNs and nurses. And we usually get about double that in applications for that program. One of the things that saddened me when I first got to UCC was that. We send out these great letters, right? Saying, yes, you've been accepted to nursing school and in almost the same amount, we send letters saying. I'm sorry, you didn't make it. Nowhere in that letter before did it say, however, we have this program, this program, this program and this program, and we, we would love to come. For you to come in and talk to us about those upper, other opportunities. We just said, see ya to those students. Shame on us, right? We now have multiple programs that we can say to that student, here are the other opportunities. We think you'd be a great match for some of these other programs. So, um. I'm very proud that we have that. And then the other comment that you made about, you know, we don't need you, um, sure, we don't need you to build a building. But man, do we need you to produce students so they can come to UCC, right? We are, we're absolutely nothing without your work.
And I'll just mention too, I think. Really good conversations about the building, but I think for the board to just be reminded, the building is just a tool. I mean, it's important to talk about the building, but the building isn't the prize. The building is just the place where the magic's gonna happen. It's the place where opportunity lies. You need a place, but that's not. We don't build a lot of new buildings in our county yet. But I think we can get excited about the building and the design, but I think just to realize that, that the building is simply a mechanism. To deliver the pathways which are opportunity for students, so.
Question about potential funding. If there was a commitment from the district, then. How, what's a timeframe in which the funding would be necessary to be transferred to the project?
Let's see, Cheryl.
It would actually really depend on how the board, if you choose to move forward, would want to fund this. Would you want to finance it? Would you want to look at existing resources and reallocate those? So, um, if you reallocated resources, the money could be available quite soon. Um, given this timeframe, since you're not breaking ground until October, we could secure financing in that period of time. Does that answer your question?
Well, in either case, the, I mean, is this something that we could put in two budgets? Is this something we have to do? But it's a commitment, here it is, all this. If we were gonna find. The money and we're not gonna run a bond, how would we find the money?
If you, um. If we financed it, then of course that the expenditure then would be spread out over the period of the financing.
So borrow?
If we were to borrow it, yes.
Okay.
Uh, if you were to reallocate, uh, district reserves, that is cash we have on hand. And so that of course then would be, you know, with the timeframe of whenever UCC's paying for it. I might want to actually turn it over to, to Jared and Rachel for that because, um. I don't know how UCC is paying for theirs. Are they writing a big fat check on day one or, I'm joking, of course, but, um, are they, are they doing it over time?
That's sort of my question, yeah, for us.
Don't, I don't know the answer to that one.
Yeah, we are not borrowing. We've, um. We've been able to write grants and get a state matching grant. The community colleges have a state matching grant. Every five years, we can apply for eight million, an eight million dollar match. We had to make that match by December thirty-first and we were successful in that with, uh, local support. Which was fantastic and then we have a little bit more to raise, so we are not financing.
I also am optimistic. I mean, I don't want to overtax the community, but I think that. Just seeing the collaboration that's been going on with all these, you know. The, the hospital and just even reading what's going on with the VA and, I mean, there's a lot of great things happening. I think that our community would be excited and we would get some gifts as well. To help with, potentially help with our portion.
Yeah, there is high interest, I can say. There's a lot of excitement about this and, and, um, and in many spaces. I mean, back to your, um, question, Dr. Kibik, I think you're right. We've got, you know, we, we did look at some financing options and so we have some numbers we can share with you later on that piece. Um, it's likely if the board were to move forward with this, I mean. It would be a board decision, but my strong recommendation would be to consider reserves, which we currently have, but. You know, that would need to be probably paid out almost immediately, but we could think about, um. How to, you know, refill those reserves over time. So you could look at a portion of money that could come over a, you know, multi-year period, could be over five years or, um. Uh, if, you know, again, the rates are, interest rates have jumped up a little bit, and so I have a little bit of. Like paying someone else to borrow money with cash on hand always unless ours can make that amount of money. So it's, but that, that we can, we can discuss those options later. In terms of timeline, just for the board. Um, uh, Rach has been great, her team's been great. I know the, the architects and design folks are a little, getting a little antsy. And so no, no decisions needed tonight, but at the upcoming board meeting, February twelfth, it will be a, the board willing to make a decision to move forward. Um, and so we can provide in the, in the meantime, we've got the notes, um, financing options, rates, uh, monthly payments, um. I think that, I think a ten-year was what we heard, uh, up to ten. There's no twenty-year option, I don't think, with, uh, I think, is that the information you received? Is that right?
If we were to look further, we could find perhaps, we just called our local financial institution and, and our bond underwriter. It's a little small for our bond underwriter company. So we just called our local, um, I'm called bank and they have like an, up to a fifteen-year option.
Okay, okay. So we can get those numbers to folks. Yep.
Cause we're not there yet, but are, are we gonna have some information prior to the, our next board meeting on suggestions? Options, uh, we've moved forward. I mean, we will need to have that.
Yeah.
And when you talk about borrowing, um. We borrow from ourselves.
Hmm. That was what I was suggesting, I mean, there's.
And pay our, ourselves.
Yeah.
Um. You know, so I mean, there, there's, I know there's all kinds of. Points of doing it, but, um.
Yeah, literally prior.
Make sure we're gonna have information even prior to.
Yep.
Some options that, uh. That may become with a recommendation.
We just wanted to, uh, see how this discussion went with the board and then clearly between this and the, and the. Twelfth, we can provide the board with some different options to, for consideration.
Question before we go, don't worry, it's not for you, you're off the hook. It's more for Jared, I think. Is. I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, the, the two million dollars that we would need for this project, is that roughly the same amount that we're short on the PERS?
Great, it's a great question.
The increase in PERS that we were unexpectedly stuck with last week, is it the same amount?
The increase in PERS is gonna be roughly double that.
Okay.
About four million dollars. And so, actually, we're talking about budget right after this, um. Um, so the number we've been working off and we're really, um, appreciate business office is really refining that. Refining that number right now, but. Estimated to be a four million dollar delta. For the twenty-five, for the next bam, yeah.
I say it was kind of weird in my head that the two numbers were exactly the same and it was.
I wish, I wish it was two.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Additional questions? Well, thank you so much for coming. And for all that you're doing and, uh, what a treasure you are to our community and to our, our children especially. So thank you for coming.
Right back at you. Thank you so much for everything you do for us and, and for your wonderful kids that we're all in love with. Thank you for them.
Thank you.
What are you gonna do with the fountain out front? Oh, that's Ben, that's Ben, my, 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 hit my girls.
I almost got out of here without that.
You thought, you, you thought, you thought you were getting away with that. My girl spent hours and hours at that spot.
Come and get some pictures.
Okay.
Really soon.
Memories are good.
Better yet, they'll deliver it to your front yard. Um, we're going to move on now to our budget one-on-one overview. And we want to welcome Director of Finance and Operations and our Budget Accounting Manager Danielle Littlefield, who's battling a cold. So she's gonna be zooming in. Um, and they're gonna share their insights into school finance and our upcoming annual budget process. So. Cheryl, I'll pass it off to you. I'm not sure how you're working this out with Danielle, so.
She is at home listening intently, so if we give her a, you know, help, we need your four-one-one, she'll, uh.
She'll hop on?
Yeah, we can make her, you know, ginormous and have her fill up the screen. Okay, so I know she will appreciate that, as, as I would.
Okay, take it away, Cheryl.
All right, just some, um, you know, budget basics as we have budget coming up. I got all of this content from the OSBA Budget Committee Member Handbook, so, um, gotta give credit to them. Um, school budget basics. There's a handout at everybody's spot. The state requires every district to pass an annual budget. Oregon law outlines a procedure for preparing, administering and, um. Uh, presenting the budget. The statute requires citizen involvement in the budget preparation and public disclosure of the budget before its final. Adoption by the District Board of Directors. So basically, we have to have a budget. We have to have a spot for, um. Public input and also that the lines of like six columns that are like, you know, two hundred pages long. That is a format that's prescribed by the state of Oregon. So if you'd like us to snazz it up, we could try, but that's pretty much how we're supposed to present it. Uh, next slide. All district board members must be members of the budget committee plus an equal number of qualified district voters who are appointed by the board. All budget committee members have equal authority and responsibility. Sometimes there's a perception that because you're the board, you have. A greater authority. Your authority is greater, but it comes at a later time. It's when you adopt the budget, you levy the taxes, um, and you appropriate the funds. All committee, uh, the committee must hold at least one meeting to receive the draft budget and all committee meetings are open to the public. So just some Q and As because I think they really, um, just, I think they answer a lot of questions. So what is the budget committee's main function? The budget committee holds a series of public meetings to review, discuss, make additions or deletions and approve the budget that the district's budget officer proposes. After finishing its deliberations, the budget committee approves the budget and sends it to the District Board of Directors for final approval. The budget committee also specifies the maximum tax rate or amount for any fund imposing a property tax levy. And for us, that's just the one that goes into our general fund. Uh, if we were to do. An operating levy or a general obligation levy, that would be a levy within a different fund. So may the, this is a question I get asked a lot, may the budget committee meet and discuss the budget before the first meeting for which public notice is published? Really, Oregon budget law says no. Uh, so it sometimes feels backwards to a lot of people. They're like, well, we're supposed to discuss this, but we had no input. You just handed us this document that you want us to approve. That's actually what statute says in a much more professional kind of way. So we, um, as a district have a responsibility to provide you with a balanced budget document, revenues equalling expenditures at the first budget committee meeting. Then the discussion begins from that point on. Uh, there are several deadlines for publication before we get to that point. And we take care of that in the business office plus the, uh, budget calendar that you guys approved. And if anybody has any gripping budget questions for me, please stop me and ask. Uh, what sorts of things may the budget committee discuss before the first meeting for which it issues public notice? Well, we could get together as a board or as a budget committee. And we can talk about, you can get training on the budget process, receive orientation of various departments. What do we spend our Title I funds on generally speaking, but we're really limited to the current year or prior year's budgets and processes. We really cannot discuss next year's budget or we should not be discussing next year's budget. With specifics of like how much revenue, how much expenditures. Until we have our first advertised budget committee meeting and we produce that balanced budget document. We can talk in generalities. What do we think we might be facing for a purse deficit? That's okay, but we're not gonna really say. Four million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand and fifty-seven cents. What topics must the budget committee not discuss before the first meeting? It's sort of a, a little bit of a repeater. It's the opposite of what we can talk about. The budget committee must not discuss before the first advertised meeting, estimates for revenues, expenditures or appropriation amounts. The committee must also not discuss whether to fund specific programs or expenditures or whether to impose any specific tax levy or the amount of that levy. So if we got together our budget committee, they can't say, hey, I think we need to double the size of our cheerleading squad and we want to see that in the budget document and. That is not, that is prior to that balanced budget document and that advertised first meeting. May the budget committee establish or delete educational programs or services? Well, the budget committee, of which all of you guys are a part of at that, at that time, is not to establish or eliminate specific programs or services directly. The district will prepare a balanced budget in accordance with state standards and the Board of Directors parameters. That's you guys. Um, it is in this proposed budget that the budget committee presents, I'm sorry, considers. During the meeting, public participation at budget committee meetings may influence decisions in either direction. So. As a board, you guys have the authority to recommend the addition or deletion of programs or to discuss them. The time to do that, of course, is after the budget balance, the balanced budget document is presented to you, but it, that is your level of authority and input. But the budget committee members can also discuss that, as can the public. That's just a. A short description of a good time of the very first published balanced budget document meeting. Anybody have any? Gripping or un-gripping budget committee questions? All right. First basics, you know, and I handed information to Chelsea to come up with some slides for me and I stuck my head in and I said. Did you make it exciting? And she said, yeah, no, that's, that's just not happening. Um, hers, hers is a little bit complicated. It really is. Um. Yes, it just is. The, uh, Oregon Public Employees Retirement System is funded by employer contributions and investment earnings. So those are the two sources of revenue and our PERS is very heavily dependent upon investment earnings. When investment earnings do not meet the projected levels, the employer contribution amounts are increased to meet the lower than projected earnings. I have lots of people ask me, PERS employees say, well, if I start drawing my PERS now as opposed to two years from now, will I run out of PERS money? And I tell them, no, because, um, PERS, if they run out of money, they'll just charge employers a higher employer rate. So the same thing happens when they estimate employer percentages for contributions. They say. You know, we think that we've got this many tier one, tier two employees and we think they're all gonna make this much money and we think we're gonna make this much in investment earnings. So when they don't make the mark for the assumed investment earnings, that's when we run into the problems that like we've seen very recently. That's not only our district, it's all the districts across. K-12 districts across Oregon.
Yes, just be clear about that for the board. I know you know this already, but the answer to your question, Director, that. Of that four million dollar delta is exactly this. This is, this is the, this is the reason for that right now.
And I do have another question. I know it's, it's obviously not your fault. You don't pick the investments, right? That's done a little bit up the. And I do have another question. I know it's, it's obviously not your fault. You don't pick the investments, right? That's done a little bit up the chain here. But did they give an explanation to school districts as a general, like, why did we underperform so terribly in a market that was overperforming for everyone else all year?
But, but, but was it? It's, and I don't know that the market was overperforming at the time they do these estimates. So they take a snapshot of time. It's in December and they have an actuary estimate what's going forward, our future you know, liability. And in this case, it's usually an unfunded liability. They look at how funded PERS is and that's what sets the rates. Usually the Oregon Investment Council actually has done a very nice job and I can give you the rates over time of what they've done. It's just they predicted that it was gonna be about six and a quarter for the time period that they were talking about and the returns were somewhat less than that. It also is exacerbated when you've done side accounts because the side account savings is also predicted off of investment earnings. So not only does PERS as a system have underperformed, uh, we also, all of our side accounts have underperformed. A good example of this is, um, another previous district that I worked in, just by luck, no skill on the part of the business manager. That board chose to do a bonding right back in the early 2000s. Well, then the interest rates were so great that the fund itself, that $10 million that they bonded and sent to PERS for their unfunded actuarial liability increased so greatly, the, the income on that fund was greater than their outgoing PERS payments. And they've had, even though we've had nine, 12% over time and it's, it's gone up and down, they've had virtually a zero PERS employer rate all these years. So, um, that might, I don't know, just kind of put it into perspective. And there's a few districts that are like that. Roseburg School District bonded a little later in the process. They missed a year to four years of some of those really great returns in the early 2000s. So, um, another small fact, not a small factor, another part of the PERS increases are increasing payroll costs. But I got a little slide of that here, Lee.
Yeah, no, I, I think you answered my question there. Like, I was comparing their rate of returns against like an average S and P 500 portfolios returns. And now that you're explaining it, I mean, it's bonds, the repurchases and it's a different, they're, they're not going out and buying an S and P 500 index fund with everybody in Oregon's purse. They've, they've got different stuff going on. And so a 6% rate of return is an an average and expected rate for what they're anticipating. Okay.
And also rates of return did have gone up even for, you know, the purse fund, according to the Oregon Investment Council. But it's not in, it was not enough time for it to help offset this rate or rate.
Yeah, and they were, I think, more heavily invested in emerging markets. And that's, I think, you know, the rates were about half of the expected returns. 6.9 is that number need to be a little less than half of that. I, I think emerging markets was really kind of where they were some of the funds sat, which didn't perform as well.
6.9 was their expected rate of return. They only made three?
They made a little less than half of that, so about.
If I had a financial advisor that made 3% of my money, I would be looking for a new financial advisor. Not that you guys have anything to say about who Oregon chooses to invest their money, but uh, that's abysmal.
All right, um, kind of touching a little bit on again, one we just talked about. Each year, poor purse calculates its funded status, which compares projections of how much money the purse system will have versus how much it is expected to pay out in retirements within a certain timeframe. Again, back to that, I'm gonna take a snapshot in time. We've got this many people with this retirement structure, this many people with this retirement structure. Here's their estimated life expectancies, their pay and what we think we're gonna make. And that sets the rates for the following biennium that starts July 1. To calculate the funded status, purse follows a process called an actuarial val- valuation. And the act, uh, the latest actuarial evaluation shows that purse funded status is seven, 77.5% as of December 31, 2023. This valuation includes funding from employer sources known as side accounts. So our side account is calculated into the entire purse unfunded actual liability system as a whole. Every two years, the purse board examines how much money is coming into the system through employer contributions. Based on the actuarial valuation and other data, the board decides whether to change employer uh, contribution rates to ensure that the money coming into the system, along with projected earnings from investments, will be enough to cover benefit payments. So I'll just maybe explain that again or say it again for like the fourth time. So they sit down and they say, what are we gonna need? And that is our moving forward liability. How much are we funded? Cause that's a judgment of how healthy the system is. And they say, okay, we don't think we have enough money going forward because we think, you know, Cheryl Northam is gonna live until she's 82. We know what she's making at the end. We don't think we're funding enough money right now to fund all of her, you know, uh, purse retirement checks every month. So we're gonna charge everybody, including Roseburg, just a little bit more. Take that times all the purse employees and just me. So supposed to laugh at that, you know, not just me. Thank you. Thank you for that. The impact of raising payroll rates on purse side accounts. So that actually also makes a difference. Increases in payroll are part of the valuation of the future benefits that purse will have to pay out. When payroll increases are greater than projections, that will increase employer rates. Statewide payroll growth was more than 20%, uh, nearly twice that of the assumed rates. So they said, we think everybody's gonna give, you know, they're gonna hire another 100 employees and they're gonna give, you know, 3, 4, 5% cost of living adjustments. And we've seen across the state through like labor shortages and everything else, people are making more money, way more than the actuaries assumed. And then I just did a little bit more on this, uh, the darker side. Uh, the current employer purse rates paid on purse eligible salary and wages for the 23, 25 biennium, the tier one, tier two people, it was about 1.38% of subject salary. So if somebody makes 50,000 a year for the employer contribution, if they were a tier one person, we would be paying 1.38% on top of that $50,000. For the 25, 20 Senate biennium, the tier one, tier two rate's gonna go up 11.71%. And the opserp or tier three is going up to 8.53. And we have about a $40 million subject salary that actually probably is gonna go up a little bit for next year. So you can, you know, 1% really adds up quite fast when you look at that. When you add up what our employer rate is, plus we also charge out a percentage across payroll to pay for our per site accounts for the bonded debt for the ones that we did pension obligation bonds for, we still are better off at the end of the day by about 2, 2 and a half percent for each one of those employee categories. In other words, we're paying about 25%. We would be paying about 27 and a half percent had we not bonded and, and gotten these side accounts, which are making interest income. And if you want to get into a deeper discussion, I've got numbers from Piper Sandler, uh, about how many millions of dollars the district has saved from all those side accounts. I was just trying to throw out a limited number of numbers at one time.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I mean, this is not gonna break us. It's gonna hurt us. I'm just, I mean, and we're pretty healthy as far as, uh, how we manage our money. But other school districts haven't. How come we haven't heard people just going crazy right now? I think, I would think this would bankrupt a lot of.
I have. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I just kudos to business office and the board. We are ahead of the game in terms of realizing the cost. A couple of districts recently. I mean, I'll mention one up north, uh, they have about 9,900 kids. They're gonna be cut 15 million this year. They cut 10 million last year. District about twice our size that passed a resolution to have $2 million in the running fund balance with a million dollar contingency, almost 10,000 kids. So to put that in perspective, we're sitting at a, you know, relatively, we have two ending fund balances effectively, a general fund and we have a purse uh, ending fund balance. So it, I, the not just school districts, city and county employers are about 900 organizations that are purse funded. This will hit everyone. And I think you're gonna start to see it in city services, county services, school districts and alike. We're talking about it a little earlier. We're also talking about it a little differently. And so we want to make sure we have a plan going forward. We're not gonna approach this in a panic mode. We're gonna make sure, I mean, I will say this, you know, we do have, we, we are estimating around 4 million. Could be a little more than that, could be a little less than that, but that's the number we're going off of. It's great. We have some reserves. We will need to make some adjustments on our end. And staffing and programs, we're gonna have to do that. I can say here, unlike in some organizations, we're gonna be upfront with that. People aren't gonna find out about that in an email. So we're being deliberate about that process. One thing to Director Lawrence, important just to, to reiterate from this conversation is the adjustments for the 25, 26 year. Because you'll need a balanced budget will be reflected in that, in that budget process. So we'll go through the process of, you know, over the next couple of months of kind of working on how to make some adjustments. We have some needed adjustments with some shifts in enrollment, some other things, and we'll work through that process. But we are, was a district down south that was short and they did some furlough days. They had a community member bridge their gap of about 900 and, or about $900,000, I think was the number. But also they're gonna, they'll struggle probably for next year because of not having reserves. We're in an enviable spot, but not in a great spot. Because this is the deal. We don't have any wasted programs and money. Anything we cut sucks. It sucks to cut anything because what we're doing is helping kids, but we're going to have to make some adjustments next year. I think you'll, I think, I anticipate really in this next month, particularly in February, we'll hear a lot more around the state from employers and probably reduce services at the county, city and school district level.
Can I add one? I'm sorry, Rod. I just wanna add one more thing to answer your question. If you were a district that did not bond your unfunded actuarial liability, you're used to paying 24, 25%. So going up from 25% of payroll to 27% of payroll feels a lot different than us going up from, say, 15% or 18% of payroll to 25% of payroll. We have enjoyed the benefit of those side accounts for the last several, many years. And so now so it feels harder for us because our rate is going up more dramatically than it would be had we never bonded. Does that kind of make some sense?
This isn't new. We've been through this before. We always get, get through. I watched news conference today from Portland Public Schools. And they didn't get specific on why, but their $40 million, their $40 million in the hole will be, they need to cut a minimum of $40 million. Of course, they're wanting the state to bail them out. It's not gonna happen, but am I dreaming? At one time a few years ago, didn't we get some extra money from the state? Because we did such a great job. What, what, what was that?
Yeah, yeah, the 25%, the, the cash on hand. Yep.
We gotta get that again, you think, or?
There, there is potential. So a few years ago, uh, the state legislature came out with a fund that said, if you open a side account for purse to help pay for this unfunded actuarial liability, we can match it up to 25%. But there was a prioritized list and you couldn't finance it through borrowing. So we had cash on hand. So we sent in our money and got about $1.8 million from the state for matching. Because so many districts, even though we were low in the priority list, uh, did not have that cash on hand. So yes. And they're opening up that program again, uh, here in June. Again, I don't know how high we are in the priority list, but we will be eligible. So then again, it's gonna depend if, you know, if we're 127 on the list, how much cash on hand do districts, you know, 1 through 126 have. And if it gets to us, we'll have the funds to.
So we could get $2 million.
We could get, we could get, we could get a 25% match. It was the max and there was a limited amount. So it was close to 2 million. We could, but what that is gonna do is gonna lower our rate going forward. It's not gonna lower our rate right now.
Cheryl, how, how's that priority list? Who generates that? Who, how do, how do you get higher or lower?
It hap- it depends. It's a boy, you're, you're asking me for knowledge that I probably could tell you of about, you know, three, four years ago when we got the match. But it does have to do with the level of debt and, um, compared to your general fund, I think. Don't quote me on that one, but I can bring that to you next.
Is there a first in time option this year on that, though?
Danielle would probably be able to answer that better since she went to the class.
Okay, okay. You know, in some of the like awesome matching grants for what we've applied for, for the bond funds, for example, we didn't rank very high in need, believe it or not, across the state. But we, we did get the first and we did, uh, get matching grant funding had a bond passed. But we approached that from a first in time. So in other words, like we all sit on our computers right at, right at eight o'clock, push the button, right? I, I, there was talk, it's a good question, there was talk about a first in time option if you didn't qualify in terms of need. So we'll, we'll find out.
She says just ranked.
Just ranked, okay.
Not first in time.
Do we have any more questions?
Then do they determine the priority based on some standards?
We, I can, I can get you that exact calculation and I'd prefer to maybe do that rather than tell you something that's not 100% true. But it does have to do with your purse debt as a whole compared to your ability to pay it. And since we have done some purse obligations in the past, we have funded our obligation more than other people have, our unfunded actuarial liability. And so we're not as poor as some people. Districts, does that?
We paid our bills.
We thought ahead. What, what, what could be helpful though to Cheryl's point is you could be in, and you could rank high, but not have cash on hand. And you can't borrow to do that. So, so, so there may be some that have a higher debt ratio, I suppose, of, of unfunded liability. But they may not qualify because they don't have cash on hand. That we're ready, we would, we do have cash on hand in that side account.
If this is due in June and we decide to spend $2 million on the UCC fund, will we have cash on hands to apply for this or will that cash be used for the UCC?
That would be in our balanced budget document that.
We can't talk about until we.
You, if you look at my monthly financial report, you can see our ending fund balance and projected ending fund balance for the current year. I would focus rather than the projected ending on what we had to start with. Uh, and I and we budget to start for four or $5 million is our beginning fund balance estimate. And you can see that the actual cash is a bit more than that. Plus what you don't see on that monthly financial report is the ending fund balance within our purse debt service, which started the year at 8.5 eight, something.
Andrew, I think that was an excellent question. And if we are going to have a discussion of taking an action on the UCC issue, we need to understand that at the next meeting.
Any other Director's questions? Okay, so I will just remind you that our full board and Budget Committee will engage in the first Budget Committee meeting on Wednesday, April 16th. Coming up, that's the first, the meeting that we're, we're talking about. So thank you so much, Cheryl, um, for your providing us this, uh, overview of this riveting world of school finance and budgeting. Thank you. Thank you. So our next meeting is February 12th. It will be at the Roseburg High School. We're looking forward to that and, uh, celebrating our students and our teachers there. Yay. So all of regular business before the board has concluded. Barring any objections, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.